Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock. We'd like to call to order the August 7th, 2023 Board of Education meeting for Granville County Public Schools. We do have a quorum, and I'd ask now that Ms. Amanda LaBrec lead us in our invocation.
Yes, let us pray. Gracious God, we thank you for health and well-being, as well as this opportunity to serve our community. We ask for your wisdom and guidance as we keep what is best for the students of this community at the forefront of our thoughts and actions. Please also keep our community and loved ones safe tonight in all ways, but especially when we have these forecasted storms. This we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Next, I would like to ask Dr. Lance if she will lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Please stand.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ready to see it?
Our next item is any changes to the agenda as needed. Dr. Winborn, do you have anything you need to add?
No, ma'am.
Anyone else?
Hi, yes, I would like to add a discussion about temporary COVID policy and signs, wherever you see good. The temporary COVID policy that's in and the signs.
So you've made a motion to do that.
Yes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Dr. Winborn, where do we need to add that?
I would propose we would put that at a 7.03 under operations. It would fit nicely there.
Okay, now we need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Do we have a motion?
Motion made to adopt the agenda as we have amended.
Seconded.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is under Communication and Community, and we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening to you all, Vice Chair, members of the board, and everyone in attendance and watching by video. Since we last met with my first meeting as superintendent, a lot has been accomplished. Today marks the first, the first full month of our new team, and I'm very proud and excited to have them working with me. And we really, we haven't missed a beat. We've been, we've been going strong. Without getting into too much detail, I'd like to just highlight a few recent items. First, our successful summer programs occurred and just, just finished up last, the end of last week, and we served nearly a thousand students this summer from across the district at many different grade levels. We also had our mobile book bus, which distributed hundreds of books and snacks to our children in our communities. We also had a very special summer graduation ceremony where we graduated, I believe, 23 students, and that was held at South Granville High School on Thursday evening, and that was, that was wonderful. I was so proud to see them walk across the stage and, and receive those diplomas that they earned. Then we also had a big celebration out at the Granville Athletic Park on Thursday, like a picnic lunch for throngs of brand-new kindergarten students. These are students that have not come to school yet, and so they came, they went to their base school for a couple of days to meet the teachers and get the feel of their school, and then they, we took them to the Gap for a big cookout. We had activities and games, and the police sheriff's office was there, we had fire department there. It was just, it was a lot of fun, arts and crafts and all kinds of activities. We also had our rising sixth graders there, so those children that are new to middle school. Next, I'd like to congratulate Principal Harris of Early College for already getting her school year underway. Today was the third day that they were in attendance. They started last Thursday. And I want to thank the board for providing the staff lunch last week and for stopping in and showing your support. I know that meant a lot. And that same night, they had a big open house, and it was just standing room only, packed. So many parents came out, it was, it was wonderful. Also want to publicly thank the Granville Ed Foundation and downtown Oxford for organizing the Back to School Bash this past Saturday at Warehouse Square. I had a chance to swing by, and that was really a wonderful event. I saw a lot of you in attendance there, and it was, it was a lot of fun for our families. So tonight, we will be following our new meeting agenda format. So this, you will see, is now organized around our five strategic priorities. And I believe this new structure will kind of keep us all more focused on the core parts of our work as we move forward. Finally, I'd just like to remind the board that tomorrow we have our leadership retreat, that all of our principals, assistant principals, and district leadership will be in attendance, and we're going to spend a full day working on priorities for each of our strategic plan components. So it's going to be just a workday. We're going to be unplugged, using old-school chart paper and sticky notes and rolling up our sleeves and having a good time. So please do come by and join us for lunch. Would love to have the board members there for that. Finally, please mark your calendar, board members, for our district convocation, and that's going to be on Monday, August 21st, from 8:30 a.m. until 10:30 a.m. at the Granville Central High School gym. And that's going to be for our entire Granville County Public Schools family, minus unfortunately our early college staff who are going to be in school that day. But we're going to video record it and send them some love while we're there. But I'd like to invite all of you to join me up on stage and help with the big, the celebrations. It's going to be a lot of fun. So the next few weeks are going to be very, very busy as we prepare for the rest of our students to start back on August the 28th. But I am very excited about this school year, and I feel wonderful about this team. We are ready and we are focused forward. So thank you, and I look forward to a productive meeting this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Winborn. Some of my comments may reflect some of your thoughts as well, but we didn't team up to do it, so that's okay. On behalf of the board, I'd like to also welcome those of you here and those joining us by live stream to this meeting. Our schools have been busy for the past few weeks preparing for students to start the new school year, but also our schools have just concluded some of their summer programs. This past Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend the end of the Summer Bridge Celebration at the Gap for incoming kindergarteners and rising sixth graders. Their excitement was contagious. Later in the evening, our summer graduation ceremony was held at South Granville High School, and I would like to thank our board members that were in attendance. We are so very proud of our summer graduates. Both events were a reminder of why we are here every month. Our work should always be student-focused. Students and parents throughout our school district are getting their children ready for school, and we are just three weeks away from the first day of school for most students. Let us all do our best to work together to make this school year a stellar year for the children we are entrusted to serve. I would also like to publicly thank the Granville Ed Foundation for its highly-successful Back to School Bash they sponsored this past Saturday. It was not only an enjoyable outing for families, but donations for school supplies for children and funds to go toward what our children need to start school were collected. Dr. Michael Fugue, the principal of J.F. Webb High School, was one of the volunteers at the dunking event. He was a good sport, as were all the other participants, and got dunked in the water to support our schools. We thank Dr. Fugue for his participation. The only committee I'm aware of that has met since our last board meeting is Operations Committee, and we met on July 20th, and a copy of the minutes from that meeting are attached in board docs. Several items were covered, as you can see. However, the only thing that will be coming up tonight for recommendation for the full board is the SRO Memorandum of Understanding, and that will be later on the agenda. But if you have any thoughts or questions on the other items, please share them with me or one of the other committee members so that they can be addressed at our next committee meeting. We will also need to be convening the Policy Committee soon so that we can resume the review of board policies. So we'll be in touch with some possible dates that we can do that. Again, we look forward with excitement to a great start for Granville County Public Schools for the 23-24 school year. And that concludes my remarks. Thank you. Now, does anyone else on the board have something they'd like to report to us?
I just wanted to share that from, I've heard from some educators and some community members that they're really excited about the work that we've already been doing so far this summer, and the cell phone policy is at, at the top of the list. So I'm really glad that we already got that accomplished, and I even had a few weigh-in and say that maybe we should consider extending that to high school at some point. And so that's something for us to keep in our back pocket for later. But yeah, just wanted to share that with everybody.
Anyone else?
Well, I attended some of the same sessions that you mentioned as well. And also, we, we attended the City Board Commissioners at Creedmoor. I enjoyed that session, listening to them while you all presented, and Mr. Graham presented the information on the status of Holly. So just been some great sessions going on.
Yeah, I would agree that that was a very informative thing for us as board members, as well as for the commissioners. It's nice to see how the committee worked with the Creedmoor Commissioners and working out all the traffic details. And I'm sure we'll have many more get-togethers as we go forward this year with the changes. Anyone else? Okay. All right, our next item is public comment.
Madam Chair, we did have two people sign up for public comment. There were no online public comments earlier, so there were no submissions for that. But we do have two for public comment right now. We'll start for public comment. Just a reminder, you have five minutes, and you will get a one-minute warning. We'll start with Mr. Carol Hart, who's going to speak on policy 2115.
I'm Carol Hart. I live in District 3, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you all this evening. On behalf of District 3 disenchanted voters who are not happy that we did not have an opportunity to vote on our elected representative, it was appointed. When Glenda was appointed, we in the district were extremely happy because we felt that she was going to be a strong leader to represent us. We became disenchanted when we found out that the appointment was only until the next election. But we felt that she had the votes to win that election, as she spoke up and said she felt she had the votes. That election didn't happen. I'm concerned that our attorney, Eva Dubissant, allowed it to pass by her and not put Glenda or a representative on the ballot. This could have been fixed, and the attorney should have made that fix, because as I understand it, Tonya Burnett did her job by coming to Eva and to the school board and saying, is there any other district that should be on the election? Five and Seven was said yes, and I'm happy we elected who we got from Five and Seven. I am disappointed that the board has not rectified this problem. I'm told that the Board of Elections was going to look in, per Eva, into this matter and let us know something. My question is, has it been looked into? It's been 10 months. We still have a representative that was not voted on by District 3. To exacerbate the problem even more, and Mr. Peace, I have always respected you and felt that you are a great leader in this board, but for you to nominate Glenda as chairperson, knowing full well she was not voted on by the people that she is supposed to represent, I request that Eva make a statement to the public as to why or what has been done to rectify this problem in District 3, or maybe you need to consider resigning. I look to Glenda and I say, Glenda, I respected you, but I think you should resign because you're not elected by the voters of District 3. I also would like to find out if Glenda signed an oath of office when she was appointed, because that's a requirement. I want to know why we continue to exacerbate this problem and not address it because the people of District 3 deserve more. We deserve the right to vote as the Constitution tells us we have. This shouldn't happen in a small town. But when it does, we're going to stand up, and we're going to be here, and we're going to continue to make sure that this school board or this Board of Education does what is right and not run roughshod over the voters of District 3. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Gina Benoy, speaking on General Statute 115(c)-37f&amp;h.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Gina Benoy, and I live in District 7. I'm from Butler, and I want to speak to the board about the same issue from a different direction possibly, and this is not a personal attack on the members of the board. It has to do specifically with process and procedure. I have an MBA in business, and I am a professional corporate communications person. So this is about procedure. This is not about attacks. And so what I'm asking the board is to comply with North Carolina election laws as related to the vacancy of the Granville County Board of Elections District 3 seat, wherein this board had the authority and responsibility to appoint a representative to fill the vacated seat, which you did. According to GS 115(c)(37) paragraphs F, your appointment to the District 3 seat was valid until the next election that included Board of Education members. The April 2022 election was the next election wherein Board of Education members were elected. They were on the ballot. And quoting the statute here, "At which time the remaining unexpired term of the office in which the vacancy occurs shall be filled by election." To include any unexpired term of the prior-elected District 3 board member. So by statute, the appointment of the District 3 representative by the Board of Education members lawfully expired upon close of the 2022 election. This Board of Education has no authority to just go ahead and reappoint someone to an unelected vacant seat, a seat not actively vacated by an elected representative. If that was legal, we'd just keep filling vacancies with appointees ad infinitum and never putting the position back on a ballot. Therefore, the District 3 seat is legally vacant, a vacancy created by the board's lack of due diligence to inform the Board of Elections of an error that led to the position being excluded from the ballot. This board's statutory appointment authority to fill the 2020 vacancy of the District 3 seat expired when the next Board of Election occurred, when the next Board election occurred on the 2022 ballot when Ms. Hayes was elected to her seat. You have no authority to reappoint for another term by law that seat that is vacant until filled by election. We have an unelected chairman who has served beyond her designated legal term of appointment, who was denied the opportunity to be a candidate in 2022, and is currently thus disqualified as an appointed or elected member of this board, and the board has no legal authority to reappoint her at this time. The undeniable result is that all of the voters in District 3, which translates into all of the voters of Granville County, were denied their timely opportunity and legal opportunity to vote for their school board representative. Placing these facts before you, I'm requesting that you, in accordance with General Statute 115(c)(37h), exercise your duty to fill the District 3 seat by a vote of the District 3 registered voters in the upcoming legal opportunity to vote, which is the November 7th municipal election, by asking the Board of Elections to reopen and publish and publish the notice of the opportunity for candidates to file for a period of five days, adding the Granville County School Board District 3 seat to the upcoming November 2023 District 3 municipal election ballot, yet to be printed. Thank you.
Madam Chair, that's the end of public comment.
Our next items are consent items, and to make it move, I think smoothly, what we're going to do is, I know you've had a chance to read them, board members 401, 402, 403, 404, approval of meeting minutes for November 21st, 2022, renewal of iReady Instruction Support Services grades K through 8, and CG Cradle Elementary Fire Alarm Replacement Contract, and the board-appointed school treasurer and bank depository. Do, does anyone have any questions of the people that have presented these? Everything okay with those? All right, well, we would need a motion to
Motion to approve consent items 4.01, 4.02, 4.03, and 4.04 as listed.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion to approve these consent items is carried. The next section, we're going to include 405, 406, 407, 408, and 409. These are all contracts that have to do with getting contract teachers, I believe, international teachers. And I think if anyone has any questions about this, we could direct them to Ms. Corrin. Did you have any remarks you wanted to make about it?
The only remark is, this is a great resource for us for recruitment and retention of teachers. Most teachers who come to us through international means are those who stay with us for at least five years and, in some cases, longer than that. So it is a great resource for us when we are seeing a shortage in teachers from our area.
Motion to approve 4.05, 4.06, 4.07, and 4.08, 4.09 as written.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. The next items are the items 410, 411, and 412. And I think 410, we had discussed at the June meeting, the identification cards, bus transportation contract. And then we also have 411, scrapping and selling of surplus district vehicles. And then the next one, 412, is sole-source vendor for materials. I think, is Mr. Ham here by chance?
Yes, he's back.
If anybody has any questions about 410, I guess, and 411?
I had some concerns. So this, this is not the contract that we originally discussed in the presentation from a few months ago. And correct me if I say anything that's not right. That originally, the discussion was that there would be a payment, a bulk payment upfront for the use of the equipment, and then after that, it would just be like a software usage fee and buying new cards and lanyards and stuff like that as needed, correct?
Correct.
So this is a three-year contract, and it seems like this is a little bit more than what we were initially presented with, which I'm okay with. My concern is that we are not looking far enough out at the implications of that. What happens, because we do want to grow this program, right? We want to use the RFID cards for more things, for entrance in and out of school, for entrance into athletic events possibly. So my concern is that when we have to pay, continually pay, for the same equipment as like with a lease agreement, my concern is that this contract number is going to balloon even more. The more things that we add, the, the fee for, for equipment will never go up?
No, the fee is, and I've had that in the June presentation. If we use it for one thing, if we just use it for bus, it'd be that one cost. If we use it for nine different things across the district, it's the same cost.
So when we add whatever scanners we need to go in and out, would there won't be in and out of
There'll be the initial cost of the scanner, which is, like, the ones for the cafeteria thing are like $75 apiece. But that's, that's equipment. Excuse me. That's equipment that we will own at that point.
Is this, but the way I'm reading it, it doesn't read like that we're going to own the equipment. It reads like a lease agreement.
No, like, if we buy the scanners separate, you know, later on for cafeteria and those types of things, the barcode scanners, those will be ours, separate from the agreement that you see there.
So for like the card printer that's in this agreement, why would we not buy that then?
That's just the way it's set up currently from, from the company.
So we'll continue to pay for that one year after year after year, but not any other equipment that we will have?
Right, because we'll get that equipment separate from this agreement.
Have we priced that at all?
Future equipment?
Like, yeah, other equipment? Have we looked at what the cost of those will be?
Not, not right yet.
And this was the only company that we looked at? There weren't multiple bids?
This is the one that was recommended from the company that we've already gotten the new tablets and the scanners from. They've worked with them in several districts across the country.
I have a question. Would the scanners be purchased from this same company, or is that something you can purchase separately?
Which, now, just clarify which scanners you're talking about?
The scanners that would produce whatever you want to produce.
Right, so the scanners on the bus are already on the bus.
Okay.
That has already occurred.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
Right, so as we start talking about use for cafeteria, those types Right, so as we start talking about use for cafeteria, those types of things, those are the types of scanners that we can get on our own outside of this.
So, it wouldn't necessarily be with this company?
Correct.
Okay.
Board Members, if you, if you have any additional questions or doubts, or you'd like for us to do some more investigation, we're happy to do that, you know, and bring back, you know, more information for you about this topic.
I guess my question would be that if, if we were to delay this another month, is that going to put us in a bind or a crunch before the school year?
Well, no, because the plan was to gradually release this. There's enough going on, August 28th, for the first few weeks, that we don't want to throw this on them as well. So, this would be a gradual thing that we were planning on releasing, starting with bus, since that equipment is already here, and then moving into those other parts that we talked about in Phase One.
So, I mean, I, I don't want this to end up being another IB decision. I would really like for us to, and even if I'm wrong, that's perfectly fine, I would rather be careful and be wrong than, than not be careful and regret it a year from now. And being that this is a three-year contract, and as opposed to the one-year contracts that we normally enter into, and there's a 50% fee if we cancel, we still, we're still in the hole for the fee, I would feel much more comfortable if we just took a look at like one or two other companies to make really sure that this is the right decision.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, because, I mean, in the scheme of things, I realize that $150,000 over the course of three years is a really good investment, and I'm all on board with the implementation of this idea. I don't, like, I have no problem with that whatsoever, but, you know, $150,000 would pay for a safety person at central office, or, you know, I could, I could name 100 things. So, I just want to be really sure that we're being fiscally responsible. That's all.
How long would it, how long would it take you to come back with some additional
information as far as other companies?
At this point-
I mean, knowing what you've got to go through in the next few weeks.
Yeah, let's, we do have a few things going on between now and the 28th, for sure. At this point, I don't even know who the other companies are, so that's going to be a starting point.
Do you think you may get that information, say, by October, November?
I'll have it before then.
Okay. Just let us know, and then we'll be putting on the agenda to look at.
Okay.
Any questions about the scrapping and selling of vehicles? I think that's a pretty routine thing they do.
Okay. Motion to approve 411 and 412 as presented in the agenda.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Now, we are to item five, academic success, one of the main reasons we're here.
That's right. Thank you, Ms. Williams. I'd like to invite Mr. Perry and any members of his team that may be joining him for this presentation.
Good evening, Board Members.
Evening.
It feels different to be in front of you in open session. It's a delight to be with you this evening, and just want to share some information with you regarding updates for the new school year. What you see on your screen is a copy of the selected reports that we will serve and share information with you each month, starting with the month of August tonight. We'll talk a little bit about MTSS, just diving into just a little bit, and talk about the school improvement planning process, as this is the year that our school improvement plans are up for approval. So, each month, you will see special topics. Next month, you'll hear more about Spark and C, excited about their program kicking off, and some of the work that's going on inside of our schools this year. If there are topics that you do not see listed, and you would like more information, certainly reach out to me, I'll be happy to add that to our agenda topics and get that in as quickly as possible. But you should have a copy of that, if not, I'll make sure that you get a copy of this via email. All right, so next presentation. So, tonight, I do want to share some information with you about our academic road to success. If you remember last year, this presentation may look kind of familiar to some of you, but when you have a firm foundation to start, you don't want to go in and just rebuild and remodel this house, because its foundation's pretty solid. So, we're going to share some information with you from last year that's going to be relevant to this year as well, as well as some revisions and updates to what we include to be our roadmap to success. Next slide, I have to click here, so let's go. All right. So, it's all about children, each and every day, the things that we do, it's all about whatever decisions we make, it's about children first, making sure that decisions are made with the best interest of children at mind. We want to make sure that each of our schools are meeting and exceeding growth. We want to be above the state's expectation for where students should be performing, and that takes some hard work and dedication, not just from us, but from everyone and all stakeholders, parents, students, community alike. So, listed here, you'll notice a little bit of information about our core academic team. So, you'll see, just listed out, the first position being the academic services and school improvement. So, you'll see things fall into buckets this year, along with our federal programs department that's embedded with curriculum and instruction and student services, exceptional children, of course, that serves all of our students with special needs and IEPs, testing and accountability. Normally, you normally see testing and accountability with science and arts as from the previous year, but this year, we're adding instructional support. So, our school coaches, our instructional coaches will be working with our testing and accountability department hand in hand. College and career readiness and CTE, that is also a change, and we'll dive into this in more detail later on, but I don't want to go give too much information right now. Next is our student and family services, because that is not just our students that we're serving, but also their families. So, it's important to include, to make, include that information there to, to make sure that we are serving the whole child. And then we see B T support and AIG, and I'll talk more about that in just a moment as well. So, you see that, those big words up there, nothing new. There's no silver bullet or program that will be implemented this year to say, this, we're doing this wholesale, other than what is prescribed for us by the state or the federal government. So, we're going to focus on what we teach, how we teach, and authentic literacy. If you notice here, there's a quote by Jim Collins, if you've ever been familiar with the book Good to Great, it really states, "The real path to greatness, it turns out, requires simplicity and diligence." And so, we have to focus on the main thing, and just kind of eliminate all those distractions. And so, that's what our plan is, to eliminate those distractions so our teachers can teach and our principals can lead. So, our seven core components, and I'll go into those as well in very detail in just a moment, we'll start off with number seven here, our top seven. Our first one is student services. So, what do we plan to do with student services? Justice was mentioned a few minutes ago, that cellphone policy has been updated. We're beginning to send out, we'll begin to send out information to our families about the expectations for middle school cellphone policies, and also attendance, attendance is major. If kids are not in school, how can we teach them? How are they learning? And what are they learning if they're not in school? So, we want to make sure that our kids are in school each and every day, so that's going to be very, very important, to make sure that kids are present. We want to make sure that that code of conduct is streamlined and consistent, that was started last year, and we continue to go back to that process again this year, as well as that student and parent handbook as well. And been learning things district-wide, so folks know whether you attend a school on this side of the county or that side of the county, that it's consistent, and the expectations are district-wide. Number six, that authentic literacy. When we think about literacy, most folks thinks about, think about, you know, picking up a book and reading. Well, literacy encompasses more than just reading, it's reading, it's writing, and it's listening and speaking. So, making sure students have an opportunity to do all those things throughout the course of their time in school, because the more we speak, the more we write, the better we become at it. So, it's making sure students have that practice in order to become well-rounded citizens, because those are skills that's going to be needed regardless of if you go to college or you enter the workforce. So, those are skills that those students will need. Number six, our plan for professional development, we do have our District Professional Development Day coming up later this month. It is aligned to our five strategic plans, back to academic success, communication and community, fiscal responsibility, human capital, and of course, health and safety. So, when we're planning our professional development for the year, we want to make sure that we are hitting those five components, and that's back to being consistent and focusing on the main thing. We think about some of the things that are being offered for our Professional Development Day, we're going to focus in on our core. There's training on our HMH curriculum, there's activities in professional development for our math teachers, with our coaches, as well as our school improvement planning process. We have professional development, was it a week, two, two weeks ago, information from DPI that was very rich with starting that process for establishing school improvement teams, and making sure that we have effective plans. So, we're using the information that we've gathered to build our plan. Number four, MTSS. What is MTSS and why? Dr. Whitaker will provide more information about MTSS for you all this afternoon, excuse me, this evening, but that's really school improvement, focusing in back to attendance, behavior, and academics. We got to make sure that those things are improved so our students have the best outcomes, making sure that we continue to teach to the standards, collecting that data, and analyzing the data. Number three, how do we teach and what do we teach? So, with, how do we teach? We're going to use our instructional coaches. Remember, we have those coaches available until the end of this year, because those were S R funded, so we want to maximize our use, making sure those individuals are working with our teachers, not just our beginning teachers, but all of our teachers who are in need of support, making sure that we're using those high-yield strategies, looking at the data, making sure that we use the information from the walkthroughs. A lot of walkthroughs were collected last year, we're going to continue to do those walkthroughs, and we're actually going through the process, and we'll go through the process of refining our walkthrough tool as we prepare for those learning walks for the first days of school, school, but how are we going to use that data? How are we going to use that data to drive instruction, ensuring that our students and teachers have what they need? Clear objectives, making sure that our objectives are clear, and what teachers know what they're teaching, and students understand, what are we learning today? So, kids can articulate what they're learning, and teachers know exactly what they're teaching. Making sure that information is also relevant, it's important that we are relevant in what we teach and how we teach. When we look at number two, our Focus Site, that Focus Site is a gem for our teachers, that's a lot of rich information. Our team, curriculum design team this summer, went back and started aligning some of the core curriculum materials, to make sure that our Focus Site is updated and revised, and that information is aligned, so students, so faculty and staff can have that information at their fingertips, fingertips each day as they're lesson planning. So, many, many things that those members of that team over the summer who worked with that Focus Site and with developing that local curriculum. Then number one, of course, is staffing. Just this evening, you've approved a number of contracts that will help us continue to make sure that we had the best and brightest individuals in our classroom, so thank you for that, but we know that the single most important factor that's affecting student learning each day is to have a teacher in that classroom. So, Ms. Curran will provide more information this evening about our staffing and where we are right now, but we're going to continue to support our teachers the best way to be can, and ensure that they are teaching the standards, they have the information they need, they have the supplies and materials that they need, and they're focused on teaching our core curriculum. All right, and, let's go back one, let's see here. In addition to staffing, something new this year, beginning teacher support is actually moving over to curriculum and instruction and out of HR, so we'll talk more about that later as well. So, excited to work with that as we begin to start planning our assistance with our beginning teachers, and finding out the things that they need in order to be successful and be in a resource to them. So, a lot of this information came from a book called Focus by Mike Schmoker, and he talks about making sure that you teach the essential lessons that are each and every day, and making sure that you include lots of writing, reading, speaking, and not signing up for all these extra things, and keeping the main thing, the main thing, and that's what we intend to do this year, is continue to keep the main thing, the main thing, which is teaching and learning. So, I'm going to turn it over at this point to Dr. Whitaker, who'll provide more information about our school improvement process and planning, as well as MTSS.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, just want to give a little bit of an update about MTSS and school improvement. Mr. Perry talked a moment ago, what is MTSS? So, MTSS is multi-tiered system of support, and MTSS is actually school improvement, is embedded in improving our schools. Just wanted to remind you all that general statute says that the principal of each school shall develop a school improvement team, and that team is elected by the staff. Also, general statute requires the school improvement team to develop a school improvement plan to improve student performance, and if you take a look at the screen, you will see who needs to be represented on the school improvement teams. Thank you. So, what does the school improvement team do? So, in order to help improve schools, the school improvement team shall analyze student data and then identify root causes of problems, and that data doesn't necessarily have to be academic data. We do look at academic data, but we also look at attendance and behavior data as well to try to figure out what are the root causes of problems, and what are the action steps that we need to take to eliminate those problems and improve student success overall. School teams shall also develop school improvement plans. Those plans are data-driven, as I talked about a moment ago, we look at our data to determine what the needs of the schools are, and then they include that into their school improvement plans. Also, we specify effective instructional practices and methods that we're going to use to improve academic behavior, academic performance. That goes back to what Mr. Perry talked about a moment ago, we're talking about strengthening or tightening up our curriculum, using the curriculum resources that this curriculum design team developed this year, looking at our walkthrough form, making sure that we are maximizing that form, and giving principals effective impactful feedback that they can take back and share with teachers to improve instruction across the district. We also address school safety and discipline concerns in the plan, and it also contains clear, unambiguous targets, explicit indicators, and actual measures for improvement. So, Granville County Public Schools supports a district-wide culture where all instructional staff analyze student data, reflect on their practice, collaborate with their peers, and incorporate best teaching strategies to ensure high levels of learning and increase student achievement for all. And Mr. Perry hit on that a moment ago, also, the data analysis really being more intentional and explicit about looking at, diving into that data, school by school, across the district this year. So, what is MTSS? Again, MTSS is the multi-tiered system of support, and it is put in place to improve student outcomes for all students. It is designed to assist school teams with identifying struggling students early, and then putting interventions in place quickly to help students improve. And MTSS also supports academic growth, behavior, and attendance, and if you take a look at the diagram on the slide, those are the six components of MTSS, and they all work hand in hand, and so when we talk about MTSS and school improvement, this is what we will be digging into this school year, or continuing to dig into. So, this slide contains the GCPS MTSS vision, mission, and belief statement. These were adapted from the NCDPI IAPs team, and IAPs team is the team that supports MTSS across the state of North Carolina. And it is important to keep in mind that MTSS supports the implementation of the GCPS strategic plan, again, all of those core components, academic success, health and safety, human capital management, fiscal responsibility, and communication and community. Thank you.
I'd just like to say about this MTSS framework, what I like about it is that any child, they don't have to be identified as a special needs child.
Correct.
Child can just have one area of their weekend, and that extra attention can pull them up, and I've seen that happen.
Yes.
So, I think it's a really good way to reach all children.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Williams, you are correct. MTSS isn't just for our exceptional students, we provide core instruction for all of our students, they get core instruction in reading and math, and then we look at the data to see what gaps students have in their learning, and they're either placed on Tier Two or Tier Three intervention, and then they get that intervention support from their classroom teachers. Thank you.
I have one question as well. You stated that they'll be early identified, school opens on the 28th, how soon these kids who may be identified get the service that they need?
Yes, so we open school on August 28th, we began our beginning of the year testing in September. So, we will start off with some iReady, beginning of the year diagnostic data, and reading and math, they will take that, and the window is from the beginning of September until the end of September, but we get the data back really quickly. So, again, we will be looking at iReady, reading and math diagnostic data for third grade, we will be looking at their three, third grade BOG, that's the beginning of the year, EOG, we will be looking at M-class data, that is literacy data that third, K through third grade students- Um, we will be looking at M-class data. That is literacy data that third, um, K through third grade students will be taking that assessment. So we'll have quite a bit of data at our fingertips, um, mid, end of September. And then the plan is to work with our principals and teams to go through and start analyzing the data and looking to see where the needs are so that they can work with their teachers in making the plans. Because students have to have, um, intervention plans in ECATS, which is the system where we house it. And so we will start that. And also, um, the MTSS team will be going school by school, working with schools and, um, teachers and principals, helping them to understand the MTSS process and that data process, just looking at the data and creating those plans.
I also heard that this meant the last year for coaches due to funding. So what's the plan in place to have coaches after the funding?
It's a good question, Mrs. Dr. Lacy, to know about sustainability. So we do have two district level, uh, have a math coach and we have a district literacy coach, uh, who will continue to be with us because those are locally funded. But we'll continue to look for ways of sustainability and how we can, uh, impact our classrooms, uh, through other mechanisms.
Also, uh, you said that we have a lot of beginning teachers this year. Just from past experience, sometime I can recall they get the worst class. They get kids who are struggling in behavior and also academics well here. Let's make sure that they will have a class creator who will run them away before Christmas. I've seen it happen before. So make sure they get a balanced class, get the coaches that they need so that they will stay with us and get support from, uh, you all that I know y'all can give them. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've talked about MTSS quite a bit, um, you know, over the past year or so. And as I understand it, it's fluid, like students move from level to level, correct? Um, so I guess my question is, why doesn't the board ever see direct student data from MTSS? If there's so much data that you guys have and so much that you use to interpret whether or not we're being successful? And I think we've probably asked for it before.
So the data that you're referring to is not particularly or specific MTSS data. It's different parts, pockets, or different types of data, such as I-ready, which we've shared with the board, such as M-class, which we've also shared with the board, such as behavior and attendance. So all of those are pieces of data that we look at to support the MTSS framework. Um, and I'm sure we'll be sharing those, those pieces of data again. We usually, um, Ms. Hayes shared that data, especially the academic data. We usually do a data update, um, in October, and then we usually do another one in January, middle of the year, and then we come back and do one at the end of the year, once all of the EO, um, end of the year testing has been done.
Um, I may be remembering incorrectly, but I think the, the question had been asked if we could possibly see the data as students were being moved from level to level.
Okay, so you want to see tiered data. So what you're asking is you want, okay, so you want to see, I guess, by school? How many students are going different?
Okay, whatever makes the most sense. I mean, you know, our job is to implement policy and your guys' job is to, or is to adopt it. It's your job to implement it. And so, you know, how do we know if we're moving in the right direction if we never see the needle?
Okay, so just for clarity, make, make sure I understand. What you're asking for is not specifically the assessment data because we've shared that. You still want to see that, but you also want to see, um, data that shows what tiers students are on by school.
I mean, is that something that you guys actively sort of collect and follow anyways?
Yeah, we have data to let us know what tiers students are on. So I think it's just a matter of pulling it and putting it in a format in which we can share it.
I think it would be super impactful if we could kind of follow, kind of see where they are at the beginning of the year and then, you know, I know the goal is to see them move to.
So I think what I'm hearing is maybe when we do our, um, updates, like when we do our October update, maybe you would like for us to provide you, okay, here are our students, here are the students who, um, need tier-two support in reading, here are the students who need tier-two support in math, here are the ones who need tier-three support in reading and math. So we do that in October and then you want to see that again in January because you want to see whether or not students have shown growth in their movement. And then you want to see it again at the end of the year. Is that it?
Yes. And then, and then also, I think it would be, like, it would be great because then next year, we can look back and say, oh, look, we had this many students in tier-two last year, but this year we only have this, or we have more. So we need to kind of change our focus or our tactic or whatever, you know, so that's just.
Okay, thank you. We will work on it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just gonna wrap it up with a couple of announcements. So new teacher orientation is August 15th to the 17th. Um, I'm sure you'll get an invitation if you're not, if you have not already received one. It would be at Grahamville Central High School. Uh, District-wide Professional Development Day is August 23rd. Lots of activity. That email will go out probably the week of the 21st. So our staff will, uh, know exactly what's being, um, offered, um, and that's across the district. And then Thursday, August 24th is open house. Uh, so our kiddo, kiddos are coming back to school. We're looking forward to seeing them. Any additional questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you for your hard work on this. We appreciate it.
So just as school is starting, we have to think, begin with the end in mind, right? So the end is graduation. So we're looking forward to graduation 2024. And this evening, Ms. Salisbury is going to present information regarding our, our graduation dates for 2024.
I, I couldn't believe that we were actually working on this while I was planning summer graduation last week. So it seems unreal. But in 2024, we are planning to have both a winter graduation and a summer graduation. We've got those two dates set. Um, this year, both of those were at, in the southern end of the county at South Grahamville High School. And so 2024, we'll move it back to Northern Grahamville Middle School. And then Grahamville Early College graduation is Friday, May 17th. And South Grahamville, Webb, Grahamville Central, and Grahamville Cat, uh, Academy will be June 7th and 8th, the first weekend from the last day of school. With the traditional rotation of South Grahamville and Webb alternating who gets Friday night. And so, um, for this coming year, it is South Grahamville's year to have Friday night. So these are the graduation dates for 2024.
Madam Chair, if I may, just quickly, uh, this school year's calendar, the structure of it is, uh, very similar to the past year as far as when the last day of school falls and that type of thing. And, um, we've received a lot of feedback about, um, the delay, I think is the best word to use, in when our graduations occurred. So, um, we've decided, we've looked at, we've looked at everything and we can make it happen. Um, so we're, we're moving it up one week earlier. We're confident we can still have those wonderful celebrations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next section is some fiscal responsibility and soon Ms. Hay, Ms. Hines is gonna be presenting a few things for us tonight.
Thank you, Board.
Student fees.
It's nice to see you so early in the evening. Um, student fees, we are required, it's board policy, to present, uh, student fees, uh, at, at each of the grade levels to the board each year for, for board approval. Um, most of the, the, the fees have remained the same. Notice that there are three separate pages, elementary, middle, and then high school. On the elementary page, you can see that technology takes up half of that conversation. And it's important to note the change in the technology fees for the upcoming year. Note that, that technology usage fee or laptop fees about midway through the page, that's all darkened out. There are no, we are not going to be charging technology usage fees for the 23, 24 school year. What that does mean is that the first damage incident will have a charge this year. We're just, we're just switching that out. So that first damage, um, charge is $25. The second damage is also $25. And then additional damage, as you can see, changes from, from then on. And so those technology fees are consistent, elementary, middle, and high school. Um, if you, um, take a look at the middle school fees, again, um, not a lot of, the, the earlier fees are pretty, pretty similar for agendas and yearbook and clubs and athletic events. And then the next page is high schools. And, you know, there are some differences between schools, obviously. So a, as you've had a chance to review, basically, these are presented to you for your approval.
I have a question.
Yes.
Uh, since there, there will be no technology fees, will they all be day users or can?
No, the fees, the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Connor, but they will still be allowed to take home. Yes, they'll still be taking home the, um, the laptops. Um, and if I, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is part of the grant funding that we received that the expectation is that we would not be charging technology usage fees for, to these students.
Across the board.
Across the board, correct. Any other questions about the fees?
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the fees as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is budget update.
Absolutely. Um, I'm going to not do what I'm, I'm feeling compelled to just do the, mm, I don't know. Our budget update is not a lot to update at the moment, but, but you need to have an update. So I think it's important to, um, point out our county funding update and, and celebrate that and, and publicly thank our county commissioners um, for the continuation funding. They did approve our full continuation funding for that decompression piece as well as the increase, anticipated increase in salary and benefits. So our total current expense will, um, be nineteen million, just over nineteen million. And for capital outlay, they did also increase a percentage, um, and that's going up to just over 1.5 million. Very pleased, so appreciative of our county commissioners, um, and, you know, we'll be sure to, to use these funds the way they are designed to be used. So I'm, I'm excited about that. Um, it is always important to note that charter school portion, a portion of any funding that we receive from the county does follow the students wherever they go to school. So they will follow the charter school. Our, our per, our per pupil, um, amount will simply increase for our charter schools as well. And we'll keep you, as we get the charter school information, as we start to get, um, our enrollment information, I'll be sharing that later on in, in, in the year. I suppose I can do that. There you go. Um, I wanted to up, update you on fund balance as well. Um, again, uh, based on our 21, 22 audit that we talked about before, we have just, um, at eight million dollars in our fund balance. After we have finished the 22, 23 school year, unaudited, my estimate for, um, the use of fund balance is just over eight hundred thousand, um, in fund balance. And again, just wanted to document what we're planning, and that that's a reduction, of course, in our fund balance. And just also documenting our anticipated costs for the consolidation, our, our 23, 24, um, cost for decompression and our already approved, uh, recruitment and retention efforts for 23, 24. And so we anticipate that at the end of this fiscal year, in June 30, we anticipate, um, a fund balance of approximately 5.3 million, which, as you can see, turns out to be about seven percent, um, of our operating funds. And again, auditors recommend around eight percent, so I feel like that leaves us in pretty decent shape. And, you know, of, of course, you know, I think it's important to, to point out that that, that's worst-case scenario, right? And we have to plan for worst-case scenario. However, I don't know if I want to call it worst-case scenario because worst-case scenario for our budget means that we are fully staffed. That's not worst-case scenario. So we have to budget for, for being fully staffed. And when we're not fully staffed, we maximize our state funds by moving expenses that we, we would typically pay locally to make sure that we're using those state funds. And, um, so I think that's a, a positive thing. But, um, but that's why there's such a difference in what we anticipate, what we budget for in the use of fund balance versus what we use on a daily basis, on a yearly basis. Well, this is where the, I don't know, comes in, is that state budget. We were expecting a state budget by the end of June, and then by the middle of July, and then by August. And the la, the meeting I was at a couple of weeks ago, they basically said, if we have a budget. So we'll see. We will see. Um, we're, we're gonna, we're just going to ride the wave. We are doing what we can to, to continue working, you know, obviously, we have a, an, an approved interim budget and, and we're moving forward then from that. What I find interesting is that there's talk of those, of mini budgets or, or mini approvals, specifically as it relates, as it relates to us, um, for teacher and, um, state employee salary increases. So there is talk that they will approve a piece of the budget so that those salary increases can go into effect in September payroll. So we're just, we're just waiting to see. If it happens, it happens. And, but we're ready to move on it as soon as it, as soon as it, um, takes place.
I have a question, Ms. Hines.
Yes.
At one time, they were talking about in Raleigh about changing the funding formula. Has that sort of been set on the back burner?
It is not on the back burner. Um, it, they would be hard-pressed to do it this year, for sure.
That's what I would think.
But there has been talk about moving that to next year.
Okay.
Yes. Um, part of it is we don't have full information on what that would look like yet.
Thank you.
So knowing that we don't have a state budget yet, I promised you guys that we would have, and I promised our staff too, that we would have a budget in place. Um, so in, in, for our part of this, basically, uh, in, starting tomorrow, the, the principals and directors are receiving preliminary budget amounts. Um, in previous years, when we did not have an approved budget, we allowed, uh, schools and departments to use up to 25% of the previous year's, um, total budget. But as our, as, as the team was thinking about it, we, we recognized that in any given year, I, you know, I've been working with, in the, our finance department for over 10 years and, and that, we've never had more than a 25% decrease in our overall budget. And so we've moved to allowing schools and, uh, and the departments to use up to 75% of their prior year budget, um, until we have the, the budget resolution. And what that will do is allow them to, to fully utilize and, and use the funds in enough time so that we can adequate, so we can see what we have available to them. We're not scrambling at the end of the year to spend our, our funding. And, and we want to make sure that we give them every opportunity to do that. Um, also want to follow up, we are absolutely moving towards that idea of a zero-based budget, um, in 24, 25. It's going to be a process, folks. Um, that's, it's a big shift in how we, we do things. So we're starting that process. Um, we're going to be doing deep dives into our, just like data, it's just another piece of data, the, into the budgets. What are our budgets covering? And so schools and departments, we want them to know their budgets very well and, um, and be aware. And also, as part of already thinking about the budget process for 24, 25, that they would be requesting the funds that their department needs to be successful in, in the upcoming year instead of just changing the amount that they've had from previous years. So we're excited about that. Um, we'll see tomorrow at our leadership retreat if they're excited about that too. But, uh, but, but we'll be working together through that process and it will be a bumpy process, but we'll, we'll make it happen. Any questions about the budget update? Thank you very much.
As always, thank you for your hard work. We'll buy you a crystal ball for next meeting. Next is health and safety operations facilities. I think we found an update on Cremona Elementary closure and Holly Middle School relocation. I think we found an update on Creedmoor Elementary closure and Holly Middle School relocation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Connor. Well, it was good to see you all and talk about our favorite topic. Let me begin by giving a recap. It's already been mentioned that Dr. Winborn and I met with the city commissioners last week, and thank you to those of you who were there with us. And we gave them a, sort of a summary of where we are. Look forward to continuing to work with them as we develop the traffic pattern. There's more, I'll mention that a little bit later on, but that's an ongoing project. That's not something that's done now. But anyway, that went very well, and I'm real pleased at all the cooperation. Several commissioners have told me that they plan to be there to help with getting traffic moving, you know, and I welcome all that assistance. The other thing that I really wanted to celebrate is the pre-K situation. And I know this is something near and dear to Ms. Hines' heart, and we were really concerned where we, where we were maybe a month ago with the pre-K situation. The move from Holly to former Creedmoor also impacted other schools who were receiving the students who were at Creedmoor, the former Creedmoor students, specifically Mount Energy. Mount Energy had classrooms, that four pre-K classrooms, that had to be used as regular ed classrooms, regular K through five classrooms. So that meant that those four pre-K classes had to go somewhere else. And we had to find that quickly, and I'm really happy to say that the fire marshal went today. So we've had the fire marshal and the building inspector sign off on five new classrooms across the district. We have two in Cradle, two at Wilton, and an additional classroom at Tar River. So all is not lost with pre-K, so. And I know that Ms. Williams is, that's a, it's a topic that's near and dear to her heart as well, so.
How many do we have at Tar River, then? Two?
There will be two at Tar River.
Okay. Great.
I remember, sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
I remember when we first talked about moving the pre-K classes, and we had talked about the age of the building at Wilton. Was there any, like, significant changes, upgrades, or additional costs associated with making those rooms compliant?
That's a great question. And, yeah, no, it really, it is. And we are thrilled to say that it really was very minimal in what we had to do.
Excellent. That's wonderful.
So, yeah. I think, well, I'm going to mention it in just a minute, but our maintenance guys did a good job of being on top of that and thinking ahead, so. Anyway, I just wanted to let you know that these two items in the, in the transition. So for my section, I do want to go over these, these items that you've seen in the slide deck. So I guess, you know, the coach in me sees that we're in, like, in the fourth quarter football, maybe, or the second half of basketball or soccer, you know, we're nearing the end of this process. And I'm really pleased to say that I see a potentially successful end to this. I'm really gratified. But I feel compelled to take an opportunity, since I'm here with you all, to thank everyone that's been involved with this. You cannot imagine how much this has impacted some of our folks. Like, I think you all appreciate that this was a big deal, but there are some people who are really impacted. Obviously, Letitia McKnight and Carrie Chisnall were, you know, their worlds were turned upside down. And they have been nothing but gracious and completely helpful throughout this process. So I just wanted to take an opportunity to tell you and the folks who are listening in that this is remarkable, that we had that kind of help. I also want to give a shout-out to Mr. George Person, who's the head custodian and the athletic director at Holly. He has been nothing but phenomenal. And I could go on and on about George, but I just wanted to recognize him. And I wanted to state that Jack Blackwell is now in contention for Granville County's most valuable employee ever. He always does a terrific job, but he really has risen to the occasion during this process. So I want to say thanks to Jack. But there are a lot of other people that were involved. Kelly Halner was the assistant principal at Creedmoor, and Kelly helped organize a lot of the packing that went on there at the early stage of this endeavor. And then Kelly, her life changed, and she is now the principal at Granville Academy. And now she is at the Holly Annex, so she's packing herself and trying to get furniture for her kids there. So her life has been impacted. And of course, Ashley Lloyd was significantly impacted, and Kristen Wilson, Lisa Tusa, Brenda Williamson, Nancy Russell. I have to say one thing about Brenda and Nancy. When we were moving, and you can, you may imagine, you know, I mean, we had semi-trailers full of all kinds of furniture and equipment. I got a call, a mover said, they're not letting us unload. The story is, the short story is, Brenda, Dr. Williamson, said, no, that doesn't come to us. She knew that that material was destined for, and it was a pre-K material that was destined for Tar River, actually, and wouldn't let them unload, and she was absolutely spot-on. She was correct. So I thought that was, that was that kind of attention to detail that was really appreciated by me. So to get to it really quickly, the move was completed July 11th to 17th. We worked with Armstrong movers. They moved Creedmoor out to eight different schools and Holly in. And that includes both media centers, and both the cafeteria serving lines were swapped. This involved about eighty-five staff members who were moved. Not all were Creedmoor and Holly teachers. Some of them were district office staff who had offices there, but those are the people that impacted. Other moves are ongoing, and that refers to, I mentioned, the pre-K moves and other building folks, members of the building who had to move, or like, maybe central office folks, they are also moved, and that's still ongoing. We're moving them now. Technology is continuing to be moved. Mr. Connor is working with his crew. We did not want to entrust moving the panels, that you see, these beautiful panels that we have, to just be put into a moving truck by folks. So we're taking care of that ourselves. As far as the painting and the touch-up, that is actually all but finished. The decision by Dr. Chisnall was to do the main hall and the cafeteria, and the lobby in the former kindergarten needed some work, and so that's being done. All the ceiling tiles in the main hall were replaced. They have been saved, and they will be taken to Holly for people to look up if they want them. Additionally, the removal of all the hooks, and I don't know how you all feel, but when I see all those hooks that are in elementary schools, I just see all kinds of middle school damage that could occur. And so I'm happy to say, you know, as a safety factor, those have been removed. Final touch-up, I know that the painter is going to add a hornet to the large, I guess, monolithic blue column out front. That will be on there, so that, I think that'll be good. And there's also significant painting going on at Mount Energy and some rooms at Gordon Granville as well, and I think, what I understand, Elementary School has a couple of rooms that are going to be painted. As far as the plumbing, that's ongoing. It should be finished this Friday. That's our, that's what we're looking at for target date. Site work on the grounds, I'm going to say that it's ninety percent complete, it's more than that, but I'm just going to say that. All the playgrounds in the back have been, everything's been removed. We're converting to volleyball courts. Traffic pattern adjustment, Chris Carrington and his crew had a very slim window of opportunity to assist us. He has a big contract with Certitude. He was tied up, but he had this slim window, and he got in there. We did not have bad weather. He was able to get in and take care of what he needed to, so we're very thankful for Chris and his work there. There is some tree work that's going on this week, and then that'll be done. So pavement striping is going on, as we say. The signage will be complete the 21st, August 21st, so you know that. Okay, now, traffic plan. This is the topic of interest for a lot of folks. This is going to impact, you know, our families. There's two primary concerns that are directly related. How is having Holly on this campus going to impact traffic on Highway 56? That's, that's the topic that a lot of people want to know. What's this going to do to me and my commute? And can we fit our car riders onto the campus, unload them in a safe and efficient manner? These, you know, so it has to do with stacking. So after a series of meetings with DOT, you know, they were very helpful in helping us with coming up with plans for the stacking. And Dr. Chisnall, his staff, and myself, and Dr. Hamm walked through what, you know, it looks like for drop-off and pickup. So we feel pretty good about that process. But what you're looking at right now is the solution to the impact on 56. And to put it, you know, the simplest that I can, it's a right, right-in, right-out only. And that's, that means that people will not be backed up trying to make a left-hand turn either way. So that's that. The key to this is communication, and I'm happy to say that Dr. Chisnall does a terrific job of communicating with his community. We will be assisting in any way we can. Our new PIO will have our hands full trying to help us with getting the word out to the Holly community that this is, what they, they have to think ahead, and they have to figure out, how are they going to get to school and from school to where they want to go? It's not going to be the way it was before. So that is the quick update of, from my world of operations of where we are. I couldn't be happier with the progress that we've made, and I do look, you know, look forward to be wrapped up, you know, this week and middle of next week. Courtney, I don't know if you want to speak to this, or I can just leave it up here. Staffing?
Mr. Graham, if I could just interrupt real quick.
Please.
Before we move on to this next part.
Please.
Mr. Graham mentioned a lot of people that have really gone above and beyond and made this happen this summer, but I want to thank you, Bill, for the tremendous amount of work and attention that you've given this, the nights, the weekends, the, you know, just 24/7. I know it's been a tremendous lift, and you've done a fantastic job.
It'll be, it'll be worth it.
I want to thank you publicly.
Thank you. It'll be worth it when we get in on the, that first week. It really, and one thing I would say, and I've said it to many of you before, when you see the Holly staff tour that facility and see, you know, like, those rooms are large, and they're, they look inviting to them, so it's worth it for that. So I hope the kids and the parents feel the same way. It's going to be exciting that first week, trying to get everybody in and get into a routine of getting in and out of their cars and so forth safely, but it'll be great. So, thank you, Dr. Winborn.
Thank you. For the HR side, everything's done.
Everything's done, yeah. It's, nothing new, I mean.
Thank you, Bill.
Nothing new. Thank you, Ms. Hines.
The next, the next page has the list of expenses.
Yeah, it has a list of some of the specifics and details, which you have, this is available to you. Okay. Okay, so I have a next question. Is that okay? Transition plans?
So the student transition plans, that portion is completed, but the bottom portion with the curriculum and instructional materials, that's about ninety-five percent complete. And there were a lot of books and materials that had to be sorted and sent to different sites, and there's some things that are being housed over here as well, but we anticipate that teachers will have those materials prior to the first day. So we're almost there.
All right. Any other questions?
Is there an update on the ceiling tiles?
I'm sorry?
The ceiling tiles.
Yes.
Yeah? Are they down? Are they distributed?
They haven't been distributed. They're down, they're be, they're being stored at Holly, so we will have a day when people can come. And we'll make arrangements with people. They can contact me, and I'll meet them, and they can pick them up.
Okay.
We did not save the ceiling tiles that were in the two-story building.
Okay.
The sort of space-looking things.
Right.
Yeah. We did save the artwork that was done by students.
At the entrance.
Absolutely, yeah.
We certainly hope that when we get settled into Holly, that you will be able to have a little bit of a vacation, maybe.
Well, we'll cross that bridge.
He deserves it.
I tell you.
No, thank you all. It's been great.
Thank you. Next is 702, our SRO contracts. Did you want to address it, or have Attorney Dubison, since she has it?
Well, I can start, and then I believe Ms. Dubison can probably take the meat of it. But, you know, I'm happy to report that we have an MOU tonight for you, and this represents a lot of work behind the scenes to try to make this change. If you recall, the previous structure of our contracts was pretty cumbersome, and what we were seeking was a single MOU that established our commitment to have an SRO at every campus. So that's fifteen officers. And we wanted that codified so that we, if we had opportunities for funding, we could use this document as leverage to get those funds. And we also wanted the document to be structured in a way that allowed us some flexibility in working with different law enforcement agencies. And of course, all of this is dependent on the amount, you know, money that's available and personnel, because I know that's still a struggle. But Ms. Dubison, if I can kind of put you on the spot and ask you maybe to walk through the pertinent parts and sort of what the next steps are.
Absolutely. So the purpose of this is simply to set forth the joint commitment, the Board of Education and the commissioners, to provide for more school resource officers if additional funding can be obtained. The goal, I think, is to seek additional state school safety grant funds if they are released by the legislature when the budget is finally adopted. So that's, that's all that this does. Our existing MOUs, as far as how we run our current SRO program, are still in place. This is just an additional agreement. I'll have to answer your questions.
I'd just like to thank you, because I think this is so much easier to read and understand than the initial version, that was just pages and pages and really hard to get through. So this, that you got it down to one page is fantastic.
I mean, we still have.
Right, but, right.
But yes, we were able to sort of break this part out.
Right. And, you know, I did, I know that the county commissioners had planned to talk about this tonight, so I'm confident that they are going to be just as thrilled. It's really great.
This will enable us, when grants become available, to apply now. That's wonderful.
And seek other departments as needed for SROs, which I'm really thrilled about, too.
Thank you for your hard work on that.
Do we have an update on how many SROs we are going to have?
So I was just about to, uh...
Sorry.
No, thank you for asking. I have been in touch with the sheriff, and I'm still awaiting a final confirmation on the assignments. I saw him on Saturday, and I had forwarded him our, the template that we use for, you know, listing all of the officers, which schools they're assigned to, and the funding sources. And I believe, Mr. Graham, they were going to try to meet with you on Wednesday? Is that correct?
That's correct.
This, this Wednesday?
This Wednesday.
So day after tomorrow?
Yeah.
To hope to have that finalized. He indicated that there, that he's optimistic about the staffing, but I do not know what we're going to look like for day one of school, so I'm a little concerned.
I'm a little concerned as well. I mean, we had a meeting where we all agreed to July 24th as the end date for letting us know when, how many SROs we were going to have, and now we're two weeks out plus from that, and he hasn't held up his end of the deal.
And do you have two at Creedmoor now as well?
Yes, ma'am, two. So the remaining seven are with the sheriff's office.
I mean, is there any indication as to why he hasn't responded in a timely manner that we, that we agreed upon months ago?
I did not get that from him.
So, Dr. Winborn, so he's taken sheriffs from his department, putting our schools in SROs. How's it at work? Explain that to me, I don't quite understand.
Well, that's a great question, Dr. Lindsay, and I'm not entirely clear myself. That's what I was wanting, you know, basically, a list of who the officers are and where they'll be assigned, and whether or not they're SROs, or they're just, they're acting as a security officer. Because I know that some of the staff that served in our schools last year are now in the BLET program. And I think that's going to last until maybe December. And I think that's going to last until maybe December. Let's see, Officer Law is nodding his head. But I mean, I know that, just in conversations that I've had, I know that there are at least four that are confirmed that will be back. I just, I don't have anything concrete yet. Hopefully, we will know more after Wednesday.
Okay. So I guess my question then becomes, you know, we're three weeks away from school starting and our, we will not be, I mean, at this point, we have no idea how many SROs we're going to have. And if the full seven that are already contracted will be fulfilled, how do we plan on, because we're, I mean, we might have a work session between now and then, but how are we supposed to keep our schools safe if we don't have enough SROs to cover the campuses that we had covered last year?
So that's a question I'll be asking the sheriff after I see the information on Wednesday.
Okay.
And I'll be sure to report back to you guys immediately what that is, so that if we do need to meet again, we can.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions about the memorandum of understanding?
Do we need to vote on this?
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept this contract as a memorandum of understanding?
Second.
Question is made by Mr. Peterson, second by Ms. LeBret. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Our next item is Human Capital Management, 801, Human Resources Update.
I'm sorry, Ms. Williams.
Oh, that's right.
We added an item, 7.03. Thank you, Ms. Hines, for reminding.
I had written some other notes around it. Temporary COVID policy.
Yes, ma'am.
So if you want to look it up, I did jot down the number. So it's number 4231. And then there's like a backslash and 5021, and then another backslash, and 7263. So I guess it's kind of three policies all rolled into one.
Mr. Connor, I will send you that link so you can display that policy.
Or you could just type COVID into the search box for our board policies. It pops right up. But while they're looking that up, I would love to have a discussion about the COVID signs and things that are still quite frequent on our campuses. There are two right outside the door in the hallway out here. I would love to see these things be taken out of our schools. I mean, obviously, that's not anything that's going to happen overnight because there's a lot of them. But, you know, if we're, you know, we're trying to address chronic absenteeism that stemmed from COVID. We're trying to address the learning loss that stemmed from COVID. I feel like a move towards normalcy and not having these constant reminders in our students' and staff faces all the time would maybe go a long ways towards creating, you know, that positive environment that we're, that we're looking to get back to.
That's correct. So, so we emailed staff to remove all stickers. And the maintenance crew will assist with what's remaining. Additionally, here's a creative twist. Dr. Winborn suggested that the freestanding COVID signs be used to announce attendance, sort of encouragement, I guess, you know.
That was actually the idea of a board member.
Oh, okay.
Or the cell phone policy, or whichever you feel is most well addressed.
So those signs, the former COVID stop signs regarding COVID are being used for that purpose.
Excellent.
And I've seen the mock-up of, you know, what the signage looks like, and so I think that's a good use. But yes, so it's a matter of custodians getting to those visible signs. And then Mr. Austin, who's over custodians in the maintenance department, will communicate with us and will assist with getting all that up as soon as we can.
I would say like most, like, I would love to see the ones off of the doors first, since those are the ones the kids meet right when they come in. I mean, the floor signs, I know they'll have to get to. That's going to take a little while. But yeah, the door signs, you know, it's the first thing that they see right when they come up to the door. And, you know, it's just time.
Okay.
I would love to know the current numbers for COVID. How much, is there still being, people still contracting? Because I know they are contracting COVID. So what are those numbers like?
We have not had any staff members who have reported COVID to us.
Can you hear me?
We have not had any staff members report COVID to us in at least two months, if not longer.
I just, I just consider, I mean, community-wide or statewide, things like that, what the numbers like for the disease, the virus in the community? I know people have still contracted virus, but I want to, what are the numbers like?
I think I read somewhere this past week that they are seeing some increases, but it's nothing that they feel majorly concerned about at this point. That's sort of the thing I got from what I read. But it wasn't really any statistics. It was just an opinion article. What about the bathrooms? I think the washing the hands, really focusing on that's pretty good because I think maybe that cuts down on the calls and food. So I certainly want to keep anything related to that.
Correct. The ones that don't refer to COVID specifically, that just encourage.
And heaven forbid, if another pandemic comes that's serious enough, we'd all have to do something different anyway.
That's correct.
Oh, yeah, I'm all about empowering them to wash their hands and eat fruits and vegetables and, you know, sneeze into their chicken wing, all those things.
That's just some habits hopefully everybody's adopted. I think people wash their hands a lot more these days.
Right.
Yeah. Any other thoughts on it?
I, you know, I do still see a lot of the hand sanitizers, you know. It'd be great just, you know, that is around. I see it in some bathrooms, but that's still a great thing for them too, the hand sanitizer.
So we're mainly talking about signage?
Right.
About social distancing and masking.
Correct.
All that.
Yeah, they've been directed to have those removed before teachers return.
That's correct.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with it myself.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want to talk about the policy? Okay. So it's just, I was reading policy in my free time, and I realized that we still have our temporary COVID policy in our policy book. And so I thought that, you know, kind of as a celebratory, let's move on from this and move things in the right direction, that maybe we could all remove that from our policy book while it's not needed. So, motion to remove the temporary COVID policy from our policy codebook.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
My question is, is it legal for us to do that?
Sure. The policy itself states that it only applied for 21, 22. So I think it could have been removed at any time, but for the avoidance of doubt, it's great to have a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Let's just all pray we don't see it come back.
Now we'll get to Human Capital Management, Human Resources Update.
Good evening, everyone. Feels a little different tonight, I gotta say. A little different tonight, but I'm really happy to be here with everyone and present our HR resource update. So right now, just to give you kind of an overview of where we are, we, at the time that I created this presentation, we were at 58 vacancies total. And 28 of those were core teachers, 18 EC, three SL, and nine other classroom teachers. I'm happy to report that that number is lower just over the weekend. So we are down to 54 vacancies and 24 core teacher vacancies. So if you look at this compared to last year, it is, we are moving in the right direction. So, you know, we went from 38 core teacher vacancies down to 24. So I think that's something to celebrate. Is it where we want to be? No. But it is something that is moving in the correct direction. And so we're really excited about that. But what this tells us is we have an issue in Grahamville County Public Schools with recruitment and retention. And so that is going to be our focus for 2023, 2024. We are making sure that we're going to put some things in place. We're going to build on what Mr. Perry did and what he and I worked on together and just expand that to make sure that next year at this time, we're down closer to single digits instead of double digits. We'd rather have zero, but realistically, single digits and not double digits. So how are we doing that? Right now, we have the referral bonus. So far, we have had approximately 20 people capitalize on that referral bonus, and they have actually referred to somebody in '22, '23. We have not gotten our numbers yet for '23, '24. They will be able to say who recommended them very soon. But one thing that we have added to our applications is asking them how they heard about their position. And we are seeing an uptick in people who are saying they were referred to our schools. So it's obviously working, and that's something that we, you know, thank you for because you put that in place for us, and so that's very helpful. But we also need to focus on retention. We have too many people who are coming to Grahamville County Public Schools and not staying with us. And so that is one of our focuses this year as well. We currently utilize those four international organizations now that we talked a little bit about earlier. Just want to give you kind of an idea of how many people we have. We have 48 teachers who come to us from other countries right now. 24 of those are new hires this year. So they are coming from the international organizations, but we also have two or three who have come through us sponsoring H1B visas. And so it is a great opportunity for our district to be able to fill some of those vacancies that we have. So what are we going to do moving forward? One thing we are really looking forward to is having an HR Innovation Committee. We would love for that to be a board committee. I know you all want to serve on it, so we'll take care of what comes first. But we need some good ideas on how we can get people here and how we can keep them here. You know, we go out and we do recruitment in other states. We do recruitment in community colleges and universities and colleges here. We have partnerships where we have student teachers who come in. So we are already doing quite a bit to get people into our building, but how can we get even more? And how can we encourage our current students to be teachers and come back to us? And that's one of the things that we really are looking forward to. And we would love to have your support on that. I know we're not voting on it tonight, but we'd love to have your support on that. But also retention, too. We have a number of people who are leaving us to go to Wake and Durham and charter schools and things like that. So what do we need to do to help them feel supported and to stay here? And that's really going to be our '23, '24 focus. Our goal of that committee is that we will actually have action items. It's not just we want to meet and talk about the problem. We want to meet and solve the problem. And so that is our plan, is to develop a plan, put it into action, and focus on all of our staff members. There has been a time where we have separated out our classified staff members and our certified staff members. We're not doing that anymore. We started to really focus on if you are a Grahamville County Public Schools employee, you're a Grahamville County Public Schools employee. Every employee that comes to us matters. Every employee who comes to us impacts the life of a child. And so we want them to stay with us if they are top quality and top tier. So we're going to continue that process. Some considerations, though, for the future. We do right now have our hiring incentives. Some of those will be sunsetting because we are using COVID funding for those. So that's something to take into account, is that we will not be able to maintain those in the way that we have. We are still providing classroom coverage pay this year for teachers who have to cover for other teachers when they're out or when there's not a teacher there. That received a wonderful feedback last year. Teachers very much appreciated it and again thanked our board for approving that because it made a big difference to them. They felt appreciated and they felt like their work matters. So the other thing that's sunsetting that we need to kind of think about and consideration is that 12% supplement for classroom teachers. Every time I hire someone and tell them, it's 12% for this year only. That's kind of hard to tell them that. It goes back to 10% next year because we don't want them to sign on and think they're getting 12% and then they're not. So that is something that needs to kind of be considered for the future of what we might like to see that number go to. But 12% has made a difference. I hear a lot of, oh, that's great, 12%. Wow, that's a lot. So it does matter. But then the permanent long-term substitutes, which again, wonderful feedback. Our principals are so excited that they each have two permanent long-term substitutes in their building every day to help them, but that will also sunset next year. So there's great room for us, for opportunity to be able to recruit and retain our teachers, but there's also some considerations of support moving forward. Any questions for me?
So what is the plan, Ms. Kern? August 28th, when doors open up and there are teachers in classroom, what's the plan to pass to one there?
So we actually already have a number of our long-term substitutes who are not our permanent long-term substitutes hired for those positions. We differentiate them as permanent and serving for a vacancy. So the majority of our classrooms that do not have a teacher have someone serving for a vacancy. And we also have the Elevate class options as well. And so we already have worked with Elevate to make sure that we have teachers in those classrooms for those students on day one, so that they are not just kind of sitting there twiddling their thumbs on day one.
Ms. Kern, could you address a little bit about the difficulty with the EC program as far as hiring, what you're running into?
Our biggest issue with EC is lack of candidates. We just don't have individuals who are going into that profession as much anymore. And so we are truly fighting tooth and nail with other districts to have a very limited number of candidates come to us. But that is a benefit of some of these international companies. I'll just give you an example. I mentioned to one of our contacts that we needed EC teachers, and he handed me 20 resumes. So we have interviewed already 10 of those, and six of them were viable candidates for us. They have not been offered anything, but they are viable candidates for us.
Thank you.
As far as the Human Resources Innovation Committee, how soon are you looking to start that?
After we get through orientation. Probably in September or October. We'd like to meet at least quarterly, if not more. And there will be some reorganization within our department to make sure that we can focus more resources on recruitment and retention. One of the things that Mr. Perry talked to you about earlier is moving that beginning teacher support to academics where truly is where it belongs. That's what beginning teachers need support with is their classroom work. So it frees us up to do the recruitment and retention work that we need to do at this point.
What kind of participation and input are you looking for for that committee? Like, what do you imagine?
We would like to have, you know, one or two board members at least, staff members who are beginning teachers, some who are veterans with us, who have stayed with us, and some HR representatives. And we'd also like to have some students who, you know, might be in the FTA, Future Teachers of America, or are interested in that field, to come and talk to us about why they want to or why they don't want to come to Grahamville County Public Schools. And not necessarily should they attend every meeting, but at least give us that feedback.
Do we need to, like, make it an action item?
That would be amazing. Yeah.
So are you looking to form a board policy committee or to have a district policy committee that has a representative from the board?
My desire would be to have, to add an additional committee.
A board committee?
A board committee, yes, ma'am. So then we would have a committee under each of our strategic priorities, which aligns, in addition to the policy committee, which is sort of separate.
Got it. So a board personnel committee or human capital, whatever you want to call it.
Exactly.
And so that would be a committee that is, you're noticing the meetings, you're scheduled?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was what you're looking for.
Motion to create the Human Resources Innovation Committee.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Gable spoke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None? Motion carries. I think it's a great idea.
Thank you. We're excited, very excited to move forward. And I just want to take this moment to publicly thank Mr. Perry. He has been a wonderful mentor for me for the past two years, and I greatly appreciate everything he's done, so, yes.
And we're so glad to have And we're so glad to have you at the table.
Oh, thank you.
Welcome officially.
Did we have a volunteer to serve on this committee? Didn't we?
We'll figure out.
Ms. Hayes?
Want to volunteer?
Everybody raise their hands.
Now's the time.
Yeah, that's the time, Ms. Hayes.
A volunteer's tribute. Just kidding.
We'll be in touch. Okay. I think we've covered everything. We're right now at the point where we need to vote to go into closed session, which, after we do that, we'll take a 10-minute break and return for closed session. Do I have a motion to go into closed session for the items that are listed on our agenda? And do we need to add one from what I gave you?
Motion to go to closed session.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll see you back in 10 minutes.
Motion to approve certified and classified personnel as presented during closed session?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The only other thing I'm hearing would be dates to remember, and I think Dr. Winborn gave us several. We also have our next board meeting on September the 11th, I guess it's because of Labor Day way it runs, it runs it. I'm not sure if we're going to need a work session. What are your thoughts, Dr. Winborn, at this point?
At this point, I'm thinking no, but I will keep an eye on how things develop with our SROs. And if there's anything else that comes up, please let me know.
Okay. That sounds good. And I will be trying to look at the calendar for policy committee meetings, too. So, hopefully, maybe we can get a group of our policies read through. That would be good.
Yes, ma'am. One other item as far as dates to remember. County manager Drew Cummings invited me on behalf of their board to come and, I guess, be greeted formally by their board on September the?
5th?
That's a Tuesday, September the 5th. I guess they moved their meeting.
One day.
One day out. And I plan on just bringing, you know, brief remarks that night and introducing the team, but would love, if you guys are available, to please join me, and we can.
We can go and clap.
Yeah. We can bring greetings and.
We're happy to support you.
Thank you.
That's 6 o'clock, or 7?
Yes, ma'am.
Theirs is at 7.
Theirs is at 7.
Thank you. Good catch.
There's nothing else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned officially. Thank you, everyone.